As opposed to about the 120 pages that it was. And so, again, if you would like to read the entire document, we invite you to go to www.pacostx.gov where you'll be able to find the entire draft version of the comprehensive plan that's being proposed. Again, thank you all for making time out of your day, out of your week, to come join us. For anyone who's joining us on Facebook, we invite you to submit your questions in the chat box and we will do our best to answer those. And again, throughout the presentation, if you have any questions specific to what we're discussing, please feel free to raise your hand, let us know. And we will be having a Q&amp;A at the end of this session. We have, almost all departments are represented by the city tonight. And so, if I don't have the answers, surely one of them do. And more likely, they have the answer than I do. So, we'll just go ahead and jump into it unless anyone has any questions to start. All right. So, the first thing that we're going to discuss tonight is the transportation portion of the comprehensive plan. And more specifically, it refers to it as the thoroughfare study. And when you're doing a comprehensive plan, you don't get down into every little detail of every road that's going to be touched over the next 10 years. You look at the big picture and how you're going to have that flow as you grow, as you expand, as you see higher traffic volumes through town. Those are the roads that you're looking at, both that exist currently and that are going to exist 10 years from now. As you may recall from last week, the comprehensive plan is intended to last five to 10 years, which means that we're not looking in just one or two years at a time. We're looking 10 years into the future. And so, with the thoroughfare study, it talks about a lot of the same topics over and over again. And so, they're boiled down, we're not going to touch on all of them. But one of the things that they point out in this study is that Pecos is set out on a grid, which means that it's easy to get from A to B without having to take a lot of detours. We don't have a lot of cul-de-sacs that end in dead ends. You're pretty much able to figure out where you're supposed to be. It'd be easier if we had mountains or something to help us guide, but we're pretty flat. And so, they encourage us to continue to have that connectivity. They also identified areas of town where we don't have connections. Areas that haven't been developed, that have historically either been agriculture or simply have not seen commercial or residential development as of yet. And so, they encourage us that as those areas start to develop, that we make sure that we continue that connectivity. There's another type of connectivity that they address, which has to do with allowing more modal types of road users. And those modals are pedestrians, there are bike riders, they are those that may be in wheelchairs and need handicap accessibility through the ADA, in addition to our vehicles. There's more than just one user. And if you were to drive through town right now, you probably wouldn't be able to tell that because we don't have a lot of sidewalk, we don't have a lot of ADA compliant sidewalk, and we have no bike lanes yet. I would invite everyone who's here, at the back table, we have our proposed bike lane layout. And we'd love for everyone to take a few minutes to look at that, give us your comments, give us your feedback. For anyone who's watching from home, we'll try to get that posted online so that, again, you can take a look at that. But having that connectivity where people of all abilities and all types of transportation are able to get around our city. One of the goals that's set forth in the comprehensive plan and that's reflected in our bike plan is that we are trying to connect all of our parks, all of our schools, all of our major shopping centers, the hospital, points of government such as the county and the city offices. We want people to be able to get to all points of town regardless of whether they're walking, driving, or riding their bike. It goes on to say that with the growth that we are seeing, that it's going to be essential that we explore other opportunities to partner with both Reeves County and with the Texas Department of Transportation. Reeves County has already taken a big step in getting the loop started for 285. It does mention that this is going to allow us to slow down traffic through town. You'll also notice that throughout this plan that you'll see a call for stoplights, especially along 285. The city's also identified the need for stoplights on Highway 17 as well as Country Club Road on the furnished roads. And so, as we continue to see more traffic, we'll start to see more stoplights go up throughout town. Part of that is for safety, part of it's to slow people down, and also to provide additional access off of those side streets that right now, anyone who was trying to get to Bessie Haynes last year knows that it was a challenge to try to get across when you're playing Frogger with all the trucks. It's a little bit easier now, but we fully believe that the oil field's going to come back and we're going to have that problem again. If you look on the third page of your handout, you'll see a very simplistic map, but that shows some of the major thoroughfares that we have in town. And it's not going to be a surprise to anyone. We've got Cedar, Eddy, we have Third Street, which is the alternative route for I-20, as well as Stafford, and 17, and then the interstate. And so, those are some of the major roads that they recommend that we focus on to begin The next area, the next map you'll see is actually those areas that are highlighted with a pink circle. Those are the areas that they've identified as needing additional connectivity. And so, moving on to some of the recommendations, they suggest that we increase our sidewalk network, where people are able to actually get from each place without having to walk out in the street. This is a safety concern as well as an accessibility concern. Again, they mentioned the need for bicycle lanes. Currently, we don't have any, but the city is already beginning the process of laying out those areas, and we welcome that feedback. They also talk about the need for emergency routes as we develop our emergency plan for the city, of how we would evacuate the city should a large-scale event occur. And obviously, that takes a lot of cooperation and collaboration with the other entities such as Reeves County, the school district, the hospital, if we were to have a large-scale event like that as well. It goes on to talk about our need for traffic lights, which we've talked about. They also make a comment that they recommend that we slow down traffic by lowering posted traffic speeds on all of our roads. They make an interesting observation that in town, you can go from 75 miles to 25 miles an hour depending on where you're driving. And so, they recommend that we find ways to slow that traffic down. With that, they make the argument that people will slow down, they'll be able to see businesses, and that actually encourages people to stop because instead of just going right through town as fast as they possibly can, they're slowing down, they're looking at what's available, they're looking at what the city has to offer. And so, there's some economic development potential there that they identified by lowering speeds. Obviously, the slower you go, the less likely you are to have a severe accident. That includes car-on-car as well as car-on-pedestrian. A simple five miles an hour can quadruple the chance of a pedestrian dying in an accident. And so, five miles an hour does make quite a bit of difference. Again, it goes back to talk about improving connectivity. And in order to do that, it lays out four points. First is to coordinate transportation and land use goals. In other words, as new areas develop, how do we want to get people there? How do we want to serve those areas? That we need to update our subdivision policies to support high connectivity and new development. That we need to pursue opportunities to increase road network connectivity in existing neighborhoods. And that we need to prioritize pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure. It gives quite a good discussion on updating the subdivision regulations. And again, this is just a very short synopsis taken out of the chapter. If you want to read the entire chapter, it's quite a bit longer than this. But it talks about the need to lower speeds. One of the ways to do that is to actually shorten the length of our blocks so that we've gotten a lot of complaints, some of them just last Monday, about drag strips in town where we have long straightaways. And we get some roadsters out there who want to go as fast as they can, maybe even race each other. We can eliminate that by having shorter blocks and by having them wind. Talks about the need to take the development plans such as West Pecos, which we'll get into a little bit more in the economic development chapter, and to actually apply those principles to in-town as well, where we are looking at mixed use. We're looking at actually having traffic impact studies performed for large developments in town and making sure that we're not just building because there's an empty lot there, that we're actually making sure that it all flows together, no pun intended, with traffic, but that it all works together, it flows, and that it builds upon each other. This is one of those things that we have the opportunity to allow future development to happen instead of just saying, "I'm going to build my lot and I don't really care what happens next door." Quite a bit of talk about increasing pedestrian accessibility, new design standards, and especially, if you look at page 1-9, you'll find an entire page of suggestions on how we need to accomplish those safe standards for bicycle and pedestrian use. If you look in-town, we have some areas where we have very wide streets. That's also a way to encourage people to speed by narrowing streets, by doing what's called a road diet. You can actually encourage people to go slower, respect the neighborhood a little bit more. Those are all solutions that the city is looking into based off of our current needs and as we're projecting traffic into the future. We're also looking at some unique solutions, especially in the downtown, in order to accommodate our bicycle lanes in the downtown and to have the connectivity there. We'll actually be looking at doing some back-end-only parking in the downtown corridor. And we'll be encouraging people to start doing that as soon as we get it straight. This will allow them to actually back into a spot rather than pulling forward. It has a couple of advantages in doing that. One is that when you open the doors, you're actually protecting kids from running out into the street because they're walking to the rear of the vehicle. It also makes it easier when bicyclists are going by because you can see them right from your front windshield instead of looking out your mirrors to see behind you. And so, that's one of the things that we'll be implementing as we do this. Mayor?
Do you think that we need one-way streets?
One-way couplets?
Do you consider that you could create one-way streets, one-way cars, or one-way cars? Like, I already found that one-way, one-way, and the next one going the other way.
Yep.
I don't know that has as much traffic as we do, but we will still have a chance to get there. Is that something that you would consider?
It is something that we've been looking at. So, the question for anyone who might not hear it on the microphone is, have we looked at one-way streets? And the answer is yes. We've looked at the couplet of Third Street along with Second Street, as well as Third Street along with Fourth Street. Fourth Street has a lot of residential on it, and so, we probably try to shy away from putting more traffic on there. We've also looked at pairing 285 with Oak Street, which is another very wide, very long street in town. The problem that we have with both of those is that at least one-half of that pair on each direction is a text dot road. And so, we would need to partner with them as we have those discussions, look into the future. But you bring up a very good point, that as we look at increased traffic volumes and safety, we do need to be looking at one-way couplets through town. Very good question. Any other questions or comments? I know this is all so exciting for everybody. I love this stuff, which is why I don't mind talking about it. Mostly what you'll take away is that we need to develop a lot of standards, we need to enforce those standards, and we need to start having a vision towards how we're developing rather than just doing it in shotgun style. We actually need to have a plan, we need to have a vision, we need to be allowing those other uses. This is also part of quality of life. A lot of people will go to bigger towns like Austin because Austin's a very bike-friendly town. There's no reason we can't be a bike-friendly town as well. We'll ignore the 110-degree days in the summer where it's just too hot for anyone to be outside. But we have that opportunity to have that quality of life and to connect all of these different routes throughout town. And those are the two goals that are the main points of this chapter. If you look at page 1-11 under implementation plan, goal 8.1 is to develop a thoroughfare system that accommodates pedestrians and bicyclists. And 8.2 is to ensure that the thoroughfare system maintains its capacity as new development is built and supports safe and rapid movement of people in emergency situations. And that just means that we're building roads the right way at the right time so that people are able to get safely from A to B. The last thing you want to do when you're introducing new roads or new traffic patterns is actually increase the number of accidents that you're having. The same will be true of our stoplights. Every time you introduce a stoplight, you start to see more back-end accidents. And so, some of that's in education, some of that's making sure that people are aware that a new stoplight is going in and that they've got to change their behavior as they're driving to and from work or wherever they might be going. Instead of putting it on autopilot, they need to be paying attention to the new traffic flow. Any questions on transportation before we move on to economic development? Any observations on how walkable or non-walkable our city is? Does anyone drive around and say, "Wow, this is really ADA-friendly"? No? Yeah, we're really not. We need to work on that. And I'm glad that that's pointed out in this plan.
So, on landscaping, would we be able to increase trees, make it look nicer or cleaner, better for the case?
Yeah. So, trees are a long-term investment, right? Because especially out here in the desert where it's tough for anything to grow, trees are no exception. We need to make sure that we're using native plants so that we know that they're going to thrive, that they're not going to use up a lot of water. But if you plant a three-inch tree now, it's going to be 20, 30 years before you start seeing it at full maturity. You can buy more mature trees, but they're way more expensive. I think as we're easing into this, our best way to get some compliance is to invite people to plant those smaller trees and, you know, water them, keep them healthy, keep them strong, and do that so that in 30 years, we are achieving that vision. We need to encourage people to do xeriscaping or even xeroscaping, which are native desert plants, which are very beautiful. There's a lot of desert plants that are flowering that do really well here in Pecos. We need to encourage people to do that. A lot of the smaller shrubbery, not as big, not as impressive as a tree, but still, you know, more than just ground cover. One of the reasons that landscaping is included in this is because not only does it improve the looks of our thoroughfares, it also lends itself to economic development, it also lends itself to people going slower. As you have visible barriers on either side of you, it causes you to slow down whether you realize it or not because things start looking like they're going faster as you come into it. And so, landscaping is a natural way to slow traffic down and to improve the way things look at the same time.
Do you have to have Highway 17 as a minor arterial?
No, I wouldn't want to walk down 17 either. Yeah, and I'm not really sure entirely why they designate it as a minor arterial. I think from a local view, it's probably a little bit more of a major arterial. It might be just because in comparison to like 285, it doesn't see as much traffic. It still sees a fair amount of traffic and a lot of it's truck. That's part of the reason why the city's undertaking to widen 17, to make more lanes and to actually have pull-out lanes for people to accelerate and decelerate to make that corridor a little bit safer. Any other questions on transportation before we move on? I know, exciting stuff, exciting stuff. All right, economic development. This is a very in-depth chapter. And if nothing else, this chapter allows us to have the tools that we need to know what we need to be looking for. For any businesses out there who are looking to come to Pecos, I would look at this chapter because it gives an entire listing of those businesses that we need. If you were to go to, well, throughout this entire chapter, but especially on page 2-14, it gives an entire list of all the businesses that we're lacking. It doesn't mean that we don't have them, it just means we don't have enough of them. And so, I don't think any of this is going to be a surprise. We need some more trucking. Lots of trucks, but there's not enough. We need more home health care services. We need more machinery and retailers to the oil field. We need more gas stations. We need more merchandise stores. We need a junior college. We need more building materials and suppliers. We need more amusement. For anyone who likes to go to the boliche, we don't have one. I guess that's an Argentine thing. Boliche a thing here? No, okay, never mind. Dance hall. What would you call that, Oscar? All right. But basically, this gives a great breakdown. It says that we need more economic diversity here. It says that we need to have more to fall back on when times are lean in the oil field. This chapter is also a great resource. It does a lot of the research the businesses need to know if they're to come in. You'll see this pretty little diagram here. This shows how many people come into Pecos to work versus those that travel outside of Pecos to go to work. And so, you know, obviously, with that many traveling every single day, we need gas stations. We need hotels. We already have hotels, but we need more. It goes on to talk about the costs of developing in Pecos versus developing elsewhere in the state or across the nation. Great information for someone who's looking to start a business here. It breaks it down by electricity, wage, water and sewer rates, building costs, land costs, property taxes. There's another about operating factors that gives us a breakdown of the workforce that's available here and where we might be lacking. And so, if we had a highly technical company coming in, they might need to bring in some. And so, again, I would recommend to any businesses looking to locate here, take a look at this chapter because a lot of the homework's been done for you. I like to break down the chapter into just a few major points. One is that we are poised for a lot of growth over the next 10 to 20 years. There have been various projections on what our population can be, but I can honestly say that almost all of those projections look at just naturally occurring growth. You're going to have so many percentage of population growth every year. Typically, it's going to be 1% to 3%. A lot of them are going to say it's going to be 2%. They just split the difference. We've also got reports, and they're reflected again in here, that with new housing and with new commercial, we have the potential to see explosive growth over the next 10 years, where we could double or even triple our population. Now, that's actually down from some of the projections what they were in December of 2018. But if you look at it, going from a town of 10,000 to a town of 30,000 in 10 years is tremendous growth. And that requires a lot of planning, it requires a lot of active work in order to accomplish that. With that growth comes the need for new schools, for improved schools, it comes for the need for additional health care. And those are things that, again, are identified throughout this chapter, is that as growth occurs, you need even more. And so, where we're already in a deficit for some of these services, we're going to need even more of those services, and we need to make it attractive for those services to Housing is probably the biggest thing that you'll see in here as our largest impediment. It encourages us to support the West Pecos Initiative, which, as some people may or may not know, West Pecos is a master-planned community that is planned west of Highway 17 and south of I-20. Currently, the city has been taking the lead on that, but the West Pecos Municipal Management District, which is the new legally-formed board for that district, is about to start taking that over and they're about ready to start turning some contractors loose for new housing, new roads, new infrastructure. But that's not all of the picture. It talks about our need to develop infill, as we've talked again last week. We need to develop our infill, we need to make sure that we're capitalizing on what we already have. And that we need to prepare ourselves for that growth. And it goes back again to last chapter, talking about transportation. We may not have the need now, but we need to be putting ourselves into a position where we're ready to build a four-lane road or a five-lane or even a six-lane road sometime in the future to accommodate this growth. I don't think it's going to be a surprise to anyone that our major industry is oil and gas, no. Our second is the service industry, and this is all non-governmental. If you look at governmental, it is one of the largest employers that we have here in Pecos. But as far as those that create sales tax, retail, food, and hotels are right after Talking about key economic development strategies, basically points it to three different points. One is enhancing our marketing efforts, focusing on business growth and recruitment, and prioritizing quality of life improvements. And so, you see a common thread through everything we've talked about last week and this week, that quality of life. Those things that really attract people to come, stay, bring their families, settle down here are some of the things that we need to be focusing on. One of the things that I'm really grateful that they included in this chapter is our need to retain our current businesses, how it is much cheaper and much more effective in the long run to keep the businesses you have than it is to lose them and have to replace them or to go after that big fish and put all of your efforts into that one bucket that you may or may not land because you're in competition with 200 other cities that meet the criteria. And so, it makes a point that we need to be focusing on our existing companies, make sure that we're supporting them. And then, the third point is that we need to work on our marketing. This is something that the city has recently started to take seriously, especially with our community engagement team, is the need to have that Pecos brand out there and to actually hold it sacred in that not just everyone gets to use it whenever they'd like, but we use it targeted, we use it with a message. And so, that anytime that you see the logo of the city, you know that the city's behind it and that it actually means something, that it hasn't just been stolen off the internet. And I am certainly not a market-minded fellow, but fortunately, I'm surrounded by people who are. And so, you know, as we push out that message, as we become a brand, that's what people start to recognize. A lot of people who've been through Pecos realize that we're the home of the first rodeo, right? But until you start looking here, you may not know that. We need to get everyone across the state and across the nation to realize, Pecos, Texas is the home of the first rodeo. And that's one of the things that we need to be known for. The rodeo brings in a huge influx of non-oil field revenue every summer. Unfortunately, we couldn't have it this year with the COVID, but it will be back. It's a huge draw, and we need it to continue to be so, we need it to grow. I would love to get the rodeo back on the fourth, but in order to do that, we've got to... to become a bigger payout rodeo, and you do that by attracting more people. And so there's a lot that we need to do to market it. It suggests that we come up with a catchphrase. So anyone out there, please put on your creative cap, let us know what you think would be a great catchphrase for the city to use. I sense a program coming up where we put that out on Facebook, seeking suggestions. It also talks about the need to update our city website. That's something that we agree with. We've placed that on our priority list, and we'll be working on that in the near future. It says that when we are looking for new companies, that we need to look for helping our existing companies grow to help startup companies and company recruitment for those coming from outside. Part of the recommendations includes a buy local program, which I wholeheartedly agree with. We need to support our companies here. This report doesn't include it, but in my time here, just in talking with people of how they spend their weekends, I would say that we were probably losing about 85% of our day-to-day sales tax that's not oil field related, because everyone goes to Odessa, Midland, El Paso, even Fort Stockton, because they've got the Super Walmart there. We lose a lot of money out of Pecos every weekend that we need to be able to keep here. And that means that we've got to support our local businesses, but it also means that we've got to bring those businesses in to Pecos so that they'll get established here. As with all things throughout this chapter and throughout the city, it identifies the need that we have to partner with other entities, both taxing entities such as the school, the hospital, the county, as well as the need to establish stronger ties with our businesses to make sure that we're meeting their needs. Fortunately, we've got the Chamber, and we've also got the EDC that are both working very diligently on our behalf for that, and so we rely heavily on them for that. They've made an interesting suggestion, which I'll throw out there, is that we need to support agriculture here in Pecos. Anyone who knows the history of Pecos knows that Pecos are worldwide known for their cantaloupes. You don't see a whole lot of cantaloupes out there anymore. They also used to have a whole lot of cotton and other crops that were growing here. Land is a lot more valuable for oil development than it is for agriculture right now, but it suggests that we don't lose sight of our roots, that if oil field were to ever go back down, the land is still valuable, you can still grow crops. And so that's something that we need to keep in mind over our long-term horizon. As an offshoot of that, it talks about agritourism, where you can have people come in and have their experience on the farm. And so that's something that we'll be looking into as well. There's quite a few resources available in this chapter, both for the city as well as for businesses that we'll need to push out and make part of our education so that they know what grants are available, what startup. The SBA, which Mr. Winkles is very familiar with, has a lot of resources out there that we need to help people realize are available to them. One of the major points that's made in here is the need to bring a higher education institution to Pecos. We're very fortunate that we have a branch of Odessa College here. We want more. We want a junior college, we want a larger campus. We want to have that opportunity for all of our local students to be able to get the education that they want here, to stay here, become workers here, and continue to contribute so that we don't lose a generation of that Pecos pride, so that they are able to be here cradle to grave and to help develop Pecos as we move forward into the future. Colleges are also a great mechanism for economic development because you get a lot of expertise that you can go to on a local level, that you can use both in business attraction, helping businesses, new technologies. Academia is one of those fields that they are constantly staying up to date on what's new. And so it would be a great opportunity for us to partner with a junior college or an expanded Odessa College campus in order to bring those services here to Pecos. Similarly, is the need for workforce training. There are so many different opportunities here in Pecos, just in hospitality alone, if we were to do some of that, training here and education. People need to know how to run a restaurant, they need to know how to run a hotel, how to provide that customer service. We have a huge industry in that. We've got plenty of others. There's never a lack of truck drivers, or there's always a lack of truck drivers, of qualified welders, instrumentation techs. We have a shortage of engineers and surveyors here, and so it would be great to bring those kinds of professional services here as well. They break it down into four areas that we need to be working on as far as the city with our infrastructure, that we need to be focusing on our infrastructure systems, our roadways, our water, our sewer, so that when we have businesses come in, we're able to provide them service and be able to expand our capacity as a serve. Housing, again, is not going to go away until we solve the problem, so it's on the list. Park improvements, this goes into our quality of life as well as our levels of health. We want to invite people to come to our parks, be active. We'd love them to bike to the park before they go be active. And then our downtown improvements. Again, this is a comment that we've taken to heart, that even as we expand in West Pecos or south along 285, we want to remember Pecos, we want to remember the core of Pecos, and we want to remember our roots, and our roots are in the downtown. We have some buildings there that go back before the 1900, and we need to preserve those, we need to make them attraction. We need to invite people down to our museum, which is a wonderful building. I love that building. And so we need to take advantage of all that. So as we're growing, we still need to take advantage of what we already have and capitalize on that. As part of the implementation plan for economic development, it gives three. The first one is to market Pecos as an attractive place to visit, live, and work. Number two is to develop a support system for existing businesses, focus on diverse business growth, and workforce training, and information readily available on the local economy. Again, we have a lot of that information now compiled for us. All we've got to do is push it out and help educate. The third goal is to ensure that Pecos' downtown and thoroughfares are attractive and functional, and improve the quality of life for residents and businesses. Sounds good. Anyone disagree with any of those recommendations? Anyone have anything to add? This is your time to give us some feedback. If you don't have any questions, I'm going to ask Mr. Winkles real quick to give us his opinion on the economic development chapter.
I read the economic development packet, working back to last. I've got numerous items marked in here, some of my personal notes from reading it with diversification of the industry, we knew what we are about, you know, 65% or 70% oil field related. I did have our education on here, did have housing, we're working on that, had it for several years. Workforce training, I've got here, I've given for you, some of the things that you talked about, downtown area, that has come back over the last few years, some of the people that have been here. We've got some businesses that have been making older buildings and made it come back. Some of the things I've got on here is renewable energy. You know, we've been contacted several times about more renewable energy, living-based economic development council. So, you know, Pecos is in a unique, not in a unique situation. We face the same challenges that all small communities, the high side, that are here, in the metropolitan area like Odessa, Midland, but that's not the thing that we give up. We face the same challenges, Monahatch and Fort Stockton, because, so the EDC under my pressure and under me for the last five years, we've been working hard to, one, solve or help solve the housing problem. When I came on in '15, it was bad. Today, I would call it a little better, but the attraction of business in Pecos, I'm told what kind of oil field is coming regardless of what we did, but retail is not. There's a phrase in economic development says, without rooftops, retail does not touch it. And so we have not had adequate rooftops for a number of years. We are beginning to slowly flatten that problem and are, have been able to get some retail over the last five years. United is a great example, is they hired 180 people, and without adequate housing, we may have not made short of this for United. They knew what we were working on. So the EDC and myself, I've been here since 1973, we're working hard to get the retail businesses into papers that you would normally see in a town of 10, 15, 10,000. I've made the comment several times, you know, I think we've got 20-some-odd restaurants, you know, you're not going to see a major chain come in here like Texas Roadhouse, but if we get some of these smaller, what I call second-tier companies, that's what we're looking for, and that's what we're striving to get back. I would be glad to answer any questions that anybody on that about what the EDC is trying to get back.
And it's very much an iterative process because as we have a United, and we'll give them a little plug because they open on Wednesday, we're very excited for that. But as we get new stores like the HTO or the United that are coming in, you know, that invites other businesses that want to come in, they want to be located next to those, they see growth, they see something new, there's an excitement, and so you build on that, and that brings in more builders, that brings in opportunities for housing. And as you bring in more housing, again, it's a cycle and it builds on each other. But it doesn't happen quickly, it doesn't, Mr. Winkles. Three years to bring United, been working on housing, and we've added quite a bit, but there's more to do, still a lot to do. And so that's why it's important to just reinforce that, you know, the comprehensive plan is a 10-year vision, it is what we're working on for the next decade, but it does not happen overnight, and it doesn't happen by accident. Whatever gets adopted in this plan has to actively be worked on if we're going to see the fruits of our labor. Any other questions, comments? It doesn't have to be about transportation or economic development. Again, we've got all of our city staff here, ready to answer any questions that you might have. Yes, sir?
So I'm excited that you guys are talking about expanding higher education. I am from Pecos, I'm supporting you here, and I just recently moved back due to all these and other, and I'm the director of the psychology. And so I wanted to let people know that the Golden Axe Road in Pecos, you know, in regard to the credit side, and in fact, I'm here today with the Chairman of Commerce to promote a grant for the workforce for small businesses that want to empower and educate their employees. And this grant will help them pay classes such as welding, electric, other sorts of careers that are the workforce umbrella. And what I'm trying to do now, which is a little typical for you right now due to COVID, is to inform the businesses, we have 99 employees around here, and you're interested in applying for this grant to come and see, so that we can discuss and hopefully educate their employees through this grant. And we have support of Odessa that could help and apply, it's a three-page simple application. And I think what I have done, as they all know, number one, and number two, there are great, it's actually to apply for this grant, we screen them. So please note that this is a colleague who's here to sort of, to help businesses, and we do everything like the main campus does. We do advising, we do the financial aid, we do absolutely everything whatever they would have to get to Odessa, we do it, we do it.
Excellent, and I'm going to repeat that just in case it didn't pick up on the mic, and if I get anything wrong, please let me know. So for businesses that are under 99 employees, they can approach Odessa College, fill out a three-page application, and receive a grant that is 100% covered, or pretty close, for their employees to be able to get workforce training. And so that's a great resource, and I didn't know about that, and so we obviously need to put that on our Facebook and share that as well. So there are resources in Odessa College, and they have everything that the main campus over in Odessa has. So we have a great resource here, we want to support them, we want them to grow. Odessa College with a presence here already is our most likely candidate to grow their campus here and to expand, and so we definitely want to support them in those efforts. Thank you for that information. Any other questions or comments? Anything from Facebook? Any comments there? No comments from Facebook? Anything else? Wild card? Nothing? If not, I'd just like to remind you again that next Monday, 5:30, we'll be at the West Park Baptist Church located at 601 South Eddy. We'll be discussing water and wastewater, and that'll be the third and final part of our comprehensive pla-- excuse me, comprehensive plan. If you do have any comments, please submit them to City Hall, as we will be presenting this to council for adoption in the upcoming council meetings. Thank you all, and have a good night.